Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 Select Board Meeting for the Town of Berwick. The entire board is present, along with the Town Manager, Town Clerk, members of the public, and Envision Berwick are here. Let's dampen pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from April 25th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes with one amendment in Section 4. Should be the approval of April 11th minutes as motion carried 3-0 with Vice Chair Corliss abstaining.
All right, that has been noted. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Terrific. All right, first, public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak about not upcoming matters? Okay, close the first public comment. We have no public hearing. We have a report of committee for Envision Berwick.
Hi.
Good evening, guys. How are you? Welcome back.
Excellent, thank you. I'm here mostly to return with Marie to talk about the success of the Berwick Bi Monthly. If you remember, we went before you several months ago as we were just starting off, and I think it's been a pretty excellent success. I'm very happy about it, and I think Marie will tell you all about it because she's really taken flight there. So she can fill you in, but I will also just say from an Envision Berwick standpoint, I go right from this meeting to go upstairs to talk about bringing lunch to Sullivan Square. The lineup is spectacular. We've got a bunch of surprises. If last year was amazing, this year is going to be, you guys will be floored. I think it's going to be a delight.
Is the magician coming back?
The electrician? Oh, the magician! We were hoping the electrician was coming back to add more power and we could have...
More power?
Yeah, a Ferris wheel in front. So, good question. That's one of the things we're going to talk about tonight. I am, you know, I like a magician, so I want to see what the rest of the folks from Envision Berwick feel about a bunch of the variety acts. I presented them with some options today, but they're all great options. We also will be featuring some more local kids. So we've been watching, keeping our eye on the Nobles Got Talent shows. Knowlton's Got Talent is in a few weeks. So, I mean, there's some great youth that are going to be performing on the stages in addition to our variety acts, in addition to our bands. We also, I know Amrita's here, we have a sustainability committee that, Amrita, who's getting, I believe, sworn in or starting that process tonight, has been leading the charge with Mary, our newest Envision Berwick member. So, some really great stuff happening, and, you know, more volunteers trickling in. I want to say people are coming in droves, but, you know, with each person we get, it's like that person brings so much momentum because even just that little bit more volunteering makes a huge difference. So we encourage anybody who's excited about Berwick and wants to be involved. Envision Berwick is a great place to make a difference, and we are. So with that, I will let Marie fill you in on what she's been doing.
Yeah, so just a brief update on the Berwick Bi Monthly. We just put the third one out beginning of May, and we started with, you know, no subscribers, and now we have 584 subscribers. And about 600 visitors to the town site in that amount of time to the Berwick Bi Monthly page. So some people either downloading the PDF there or accessing it there. I know a couple of people said they didn't want to give their email, but were interested in checking it on the town site. So I know some people accessing it that way. BCM just started recording it, so there was a volunteer who read it, and so that'll be on the TV channels and on YouTube for anyone who is not getting the email. There's still, you know, I'm still working on how to reach people that don't have email. It's posted at the library, post office, and town hall. I've left two messages with Applegate Village to see, one, if I can post it there, if there's a good place I can post it, but also if they have something they sent out to their residents that I could include even just a link to. If they have some physical, you know, that, hey, you can pick this up at the library, or you can, you know, download it here if you have access to a computer but don't use email. So it's been going really well. The departments have been amazing. Everyone gets back to me within like 24 hours. It's been, it really has been amazing. All the information's been great to gather, and the, you know, silver lining to it is that I, as a volunteer, do the social media pages, and so I've really been, it's been so easy to stay up. I just get out my Berwick Bi Monthly, and I'm like, oh, there's an event, there's an event. So hopefully over time that'll just build community awareness of everything that's going on, and, you know, the really important things like getting people out to vote, and, you know, we've got the Meet the Candidates next week, so getting people to view that, and then sending out the link in the June Bi Monthly. So, are there any questions? Any specific questions?
I recently saw the video version. I think that's a great addition to the spread of the campaign. I think that's really smart, and it looked really nice. The only other thing I could suggest is maybe if there was like a way to hang it up at the dump or something at some other public place, you know, town place where people go.
Yeah, you know, the swap shop would be a great spot, I guess, for it, like maybe right outside the swap shop.
Other than that, aside from mailing it, you know, which is a whole world of expense, but, you know, besides that, there's no other ways to really get it out in mass.
Yeah, it's like I wish I could find the, like, you know, addresses of anyone who doesn't use email, because it's not, it's, you know, going to be a large number, but it's not going to be enormous. It's like if we could just find the email to, you know, anyone who could only receive it by mail, you know, that isn't able to go to the library and get a copy, because Sharon generously said she'll print copies if people go there and ask for a copy. And there is the full newsletter there on just the table that people can flip through, though they have been taken, even though it says library copy. But, so people do want a physical, physical version. But, um, but yeah, so still working on, on ways to reach.
Have you tried the local establishments like Mainly Yokes and Bad Wolf and them? Because I know when I go to breakfast there, there's always a waiting line, people sitting there waiting.
Oh, that's a great idea, just having it posted there.
And the post office as well?
Yeah, it is at the post office because several people have said that that's where they read things while they're in there, so.
Yeah, even Corner Point, I see on the side they have a few town announcements, so they might be willing to put, you know, a couple copies there.
That, that's a great idea, and hopefully reach some of those people that aren't using email, or some people I think just may not know that it's out there yet. You know, several people have said, oh, you know, you should, is there any way you can email it? Because they've only been finding it on the town site. And I was like, well, that, it is an emailed calendar, and you just have to go where you're finding it on the town site and put your email in.
You may also reach out to the schools and see if they'd be willing to send a notice home to parents, whether it be something small or simple, and just be like, hey, you can sign up for this newsletter and find out what's going in town.
Oh, that's a fantastic idea, because I've actually had a couple of great contacts there that have been giving me their school events, and they've been amazing. Everyone really, every single person I've emailed has just sent me their events so quickly, and I've been so appreciative that we're consolidating information.
How many town households we have in the town? 5,000, 6,000 households?
Yeah.
So, roughly 10% of households signed up or whatever. That's pretty sizable.
Yeah, and you, you know, one person in the swamp shop, because Elise and I volunteered there to open it a Sunday or two ago for a few hours, and, and so, you know, I was plugging the Berwick Bi Monthly, of course, while I was chatting with people, and one gentleman said, oh, well, my wife gets that. So I think even we can imagine that maybe one person's printing it out for the family, too. So, so I'm hoping to, hoping it just continues to build. It's been really, really fun, and everyone, like I said, the departments have been incredible, so.
And it certainly, it seems, you know, more cost effective than sending out a quarterly mail out, you know?
Yeah, well, I think the hardest part, too, was that so many people said they didn't get it in the mail. And to have that amount of time and money and work go into something that then is just getting put in the trash.
If they're anything like me, they absolutely got it in the mail, and then they just didn't notice it. It was behind a flyer for Shaw's, and they just put it in the recycle and left, and, you know, and they go, oh, no, I didn't get it, didn't see it at all.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that does happen, too, but, boy, I know there are people that really would love to have a, have a physical copy. It's like, oh, you know, maybe someday we'll.
Just to add to that, it was actually because the everyday, Every Door Direct Mail was the, was the rate that we were sending it out through, it would sometimes, you know, it was going out through the South Berwick Post Office initially, and it would sometimes sit for, for, you know, a week, two weeks, and not move, because it was not, for whatever reason, getting categorized to something that had to, like, remember when we all got the Sentinel that would arrive every Friday in your mailbox? This wasn't getting sent like that, and we couldn't, there was no way to, to get the USPS to handle it in a different way, which, you know, although it was, you know, very expensive to send them out, we even weren't, you know, money's worth, because it wasn't moving. It was incredibly frustrating.
And it was three months' worth of town material, so hard to collect that from departments, get your next three months and send them, and then.
And then it's hard for citizens to be like, I have to plan three months in advance what I'm doing.
Right, so I think all in all, this, you know, email version is going to be more reliable, but it is going to be working to.
I think it's a much better iteration.
Yeah, and I love the recording. So Ralph did a great job putting that together for, you know, hopefully, it was so cool. He like interspersed little videos, too, so it was, you know, felt like a video, wasn't just.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, just for those watching at home, can you remind them if they have not signed up, how to sign up to get the email?
Yes, thank you so much. If you have not signed up for the Berwick Bi Monthly, it's on the town website. You just go under Community, Berwick Bi Monthly, and you can add your email, and we will not share your email with anything. This goes in MailChimp, it is secure, and it will only go, you will only receive the Berwick Bi Monthly through this MailChimp. Thank you, Mike.
Any questions? Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have no unfinished business. Town managers report. Oh, Dan, this one? Oh, boards, you're right. I just, I saw one star and I jumped right down. Let me back up a second. No department reports. We have an appointment. Amrita Cotrell. Is that pronounced right?
It's close enough.
You go ahead, please correct me.
Amrita Cotrell.
Cotrell. Amrita Cotrell. Yes, you are looking to be appointed to the Envision Berwick Committee for a term of two years. Please tell us about yourself.
So I moved here just a little over a year ago with my husband. We're new transplants from Southern Oregon, where we were really involved in a lot of environmental work through Master Gardener Program there. We're both master gardeners. Dennis is a master land steward, and we learned a lot in those programs and also working on our own property. We had almost a six-acre property. And when we moved to Berwick, we decided that we wanted to share the knowledge that we had about gardening, mostly about gardening and the environment, with, with our community. So I just put out a quick little Facebook post saying that if anybody wanted to learn about how to do food foresting, we're going to have a little open house at our house. Come over, we'll share what we know, and we'll have you dig some holes for our trees. And it was a really great way to do that. So we, we did that a year ago during spring break, and I forget how many, maybe 10 different families came, and we got a lot of stuff planted that week. So that gave us the impetus to start teaching about food forest gardening and permaculture at the library. So we have a series of classes that we're giving at the library now. Next week is our next class. And, yeah, we just really want to be of service to our community and, and share what we're knowledge we have and learn from the people around us.
What brought you to Berwick from Southern Oregon?
My mother. My mother was living in Dover. It was the end of her life. I hadn't lived near her for quite a long time, and it felt really important to be with her at the end of her life. And I had 20 months of being with her almost every day. She passed away just about a month ago. So it was really a blessing to be able to be near her and hang out with her.
What is your opinion on community gardens?
Let's see, what time is it? I think community gardens are a big wave of the future. There's so much food insecurity these days. We certainly saw during COVID all the issues with poor deliveries and not being able to get food and people not being able to get out to get food. Community gardens are a great way to grow your own food, to have a bigger sense of community. I think that's the other thing since COVID that we see, is that people are really longing for that sense of community because we were isolated for so long. So in the research that I've done, community gardens are really growing across the country. And it's a way for people who either don't have room at home, don't have the energy to do all of the foundational work to have gardens at home. Maybe some people live in apartments or condominiums where they can't have a garden. This gives them an opportunity to be able to grow their own food and to learn from, from their neighbors.
It has been recently suggested that we start a community garden in Berwick. Would you be willing to give us a hand with that if we actually get that approved?
I certainly would.
Well, I said right here, master gardener. I can't think of anything more appropriate.
Well, let me just tell you how I've been telling people how I feel. I'm sitting at a stoplight, pressing the gas pedal and the brake at the same time. So I'm like, ready to let my foot off the brake, so.
And just get something done.
I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that tonight.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Where would you have the garden? Community garden?
We have a presentation tonight about that.
Yeah. She's going to be doing.
Yep.
So, let me, a motion, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I may, oh, I'll mess this up. Okay, I'll make a motion that Amrita Cotrell?
That's close.
Okay. Be appointed to the Envision Berwick Board for a two-year term.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? So you can start your public works adventure with us right now.
Okay, lifting that, lifting that foot off the brake. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We always appreciate people wanting to help, so, please, if there's other people watching that want to volunteer, we have plenty of committees. We have the Recreation Committee, we have the Envision Committee, we have Berwick for a Lifetime, we have people to volunteer at the library. We have tons of stuff going on.
We'll make new committees.
Yeah, we will. We will make brand-new committees, you know?
You need it, yeah.
Yeah, anything. So, please, come on down. All right, now, back on track. We have no unfinished business. Town manager report.
The Senate area of Memorial Field has been surveyed as a priority. We have a lot of projects going on, so we worked with a civil engineer to work on topography and just make sure everything fits correctly. We will be surveying the entire field, but we just wanted to get the Senate area because there's so many projects going on there. We had the basketball poles installed based on a concept with the proximate areas. They're going to be reset into the exact areas based on the survey results we received.
Are they going to, are they going to pay for that, resetting them?
We're going to a different contractor.
We paid him once to do it right, and now we're going to go to a different, so the other people won't fix it. How do we end up like that? I don't understand it.
I mean, I can take the, I mean, that's on me, and can't really hold him to the, we, when we, we showed him a concept, and he did the best he could with a concept. What we should have done is surveyed it and had it staked out. So he, he had measurements, and we under the impression based on the laser, laser measurements, that he was able to get it square, and it was mostly square. It was just, it was put in the wrong area. But like I said, we showed him a picture, basically, that was a concept, and we had since, and now we have a actual survey from a civil engineer. So now we have precise locations, and when we have this next company come out and do it, we'll all have the areas staked out, so they'll be in the exact areas. And while they're being installed, we're going to have a civil engineer on site. And again, that's, that's on me. I, I should have known better to go with the concept. Like I said, we're working with Cibago Technics. They're a top-notch engineer firm, and going forward, won't make that mistake again. Next, so once, once those poles are reset, that will be set for paving, so those courts should be looking pretty good by, by June. For the pickleball tennis court, retaining wall is needed, and getting a retaining wall in place will help us extend the court to a regulation size of 120 feet. So we have, we're going to getting a couple quotes for that. We're coordinating the fence for the tennis and pickleball court. Once that's in, along with the poles for the netting, we'll be able to get that ready for paving. The playground company has the CAD files, and our engineer has that, so that's all plotted. Some site work's going to be needed, but that's all on track. And Josh will be here at the next meeting to give more of a comprehensive update.
And give us an update on the, the road race or whatever it was.
Oh, that was, yeah, Luca and I checked it out this past Saturday, beautiful weather and just a really special event, but, like, uh.
I saw the pictures.
Looking forward to next.
Yeah, it looked like fun.
The picture of all the cars lined up, I was just like, I'm just, it looked like it was about to be a, just bumper cars.
That's it. I was surprised. I kept him like stable enough to take the picture, you know, those kids, and, and the gas pedals.
I guess the, for the small kids, parents get control with their remote, so that's a whole.
They got fancier things than I got. We still have the little tikes you gotta go with.
The one for my daughter, she hit the gas, and I was, next thing I know, I was chasing her up the road. I'm like, no, I don't like this.
For the next meeting, we'll have the hearing on speed tables inviting neighborhoods. It's Sweetsor and Dobson. The notices went out in the mail today. Just to give them opportunity, if they have any questions or concerns. And the intention would be for any streets that need traffic calming to do speed tables, not speed humps, which they're more extended, they're less abrupt, but they get that design speed down to where the speed limit.
They're just speed bumps that are wider.
Exactly, yep. And again, just, you should be going close to or just under what the actual speed limit is, and not actually need to go 5 miles an hour. It should be 20 to 25 miles an hour.
So where are you going to determine where they will, what roads you'll get them?
Well, they've been requested. Sweetsor Street sent in a petition, and it makes sense due to the population, and Dobson has requested one as well.
Oh, Blackberry Hill Road?
Blackberry Hill Road, so for, you're not supposed to use them on speed limits any, any higher than 40, and.
45.
It's Blackberry 45?
Yeah. It'll turn your car into a rocket launcher or whatever.
It doesn't matter, they're going 65, they're in orbit going over, in the air.
There might be other ways for traffic, traffic calming, even just painting smaller travel lanes. But where it's, it is downhill on a straightaway, you're going to have pretty high speeds.
We have a lot of cutoff now from when kind, going to kind farms on a weekend, so they're cutting a lot of New Hampshire people and Massachusetts people coming across and going down. Must be using the GPS.
Yeah, the GPS, yeah, if you take, if you put in the GPS, it takes you all the, the back roads to everything, you know? Instead of going, taking down like nine or four or whatever, you know, you just got, you had to do the back roads, so.
I had a request. Lisa, she's, has been going to town on the, by the Sullivan Monument, planting perennials, annuals, and we had a request for last year that was funded. Lisa's requested up to $300 out of TIP funds for beautification. This gets approved through the board, and this was a request that came in yesterday. So she's planted 700 daffodil bulbs, bulbs, and a couple other flowers. And again, she's got perennials in there and annuals, so she's building it up.
How much money do we have in TIP funds?
Hey, off the top of my head, I think there's 40,000, 30,000, 40,000 in there.
I move that we allocate $300 for beautification.
I second it.
All those in favor?
No.
She can plant her flowers.
Put the flowers off the interest alone.
Yeah, right.
And the last thing.
She does a nice job.
No, it looks great.
Especially when you're coming across.
And especially when they're taking like the, the, like the pictures of the town, you see the, it looks great.
Yeah.
Last thing I have, I just gave you copies of a fund balance amendment. This will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Just wanted to give it to you so you had time to review. It's on page three. This was reviewed, actually, I sent it to our attorney, and they deferred it to our auditors. Auditors reviewed it and said it looked, looked okay. So this just would allow us to use the undoesided fund balance to offset the town's tax levy as established by LD1. And that completes my update.
Any questions for the town manager? All right, moving along. The Select Board Communications, there is only one. It is from Comcast, and it's just letting you know that they can't make up their mind. In effective May 23rd, HBO Max will rename Max, because, of course it will. I tell you, that guy running Warner Brothers does not have a clue what he's doing. I tell you. That's not going to fix that, damn it. All right, accounts payable. We have a payroll warrant number 74 from May 4th, 2023, in the amount of $77,151.60. We have a payroll warrant number 75 from May 11th, 2023, in the amount of $72,824.81. And an accounts payable warrant number 76 from May 9th, 2023, in the amount of $1,192,669.79. I move that we pay our bills. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Bills are paid. All right, new business, proposed downtown bench.
It's a project probably four years in the making, trying to find, just because once we pick it, it's going to be the ideas for it to be uniform across the downtown. It's got black arms, legs, and six feet in width, evergreen color, made from recycled plastic, so extremely durable and weather resistant. And I have, I've run, I've run this design by Envision Berwick. Seems to be a few members of Envision Berwick, and there's good consensus. The other style that I initially was going to propose was, had wood oak planks, and just kind of thinking through that a little bit, would probably require maintenance every year or two, a few times, maintenance of the planks times 25 to, I don't know, 50 benches. When it comes down to it, it's probably a little, a lot for maintenance.
Well, not just in money, but also time and energy to keep up on it.
Right, right. And from what I've seen, the recycled plastics comfortable, looks good.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So this, I would like to authorize TIP funds to purchase six benches and one memorial plaque for Eleanor Murphy for a total of up to $6,500. Purchasing six includes a bulk discount and gets us a better deal on shipping, so it actually, it's a significant savings, about $500 per bench. So each bench breaks down to one, about $1,083 per bench. Each cast bronze plaque is $206. So I know we've talked about a bench program, so something to think about. We don't have to figure it out tonight, but for the bench program, is it something where if someone wants to have a memorial bench, should they pay for the whole bench? Should it be a proportion of the bench? Or maybe they just pay for the plaque? So something to think about, we can develop over time.
I would recommend that each bench... I would recommend that each bench could have two plaques unless you wanted to pay for a singular bench, you know, that way, a person could have a plaque, and they wouldn't have to foot the entire bill of the whole bench. But I think the two plaques should be equivalent to the cost of the bench. Does that make sense?
So they would have to pay $1,000 for the bench, and then the $200 and something for the plaque?
Yeah.
So...
I think it'd be a total of, so it'd be...
$1,268.
If they wanted a plaque, a bench with just their plaque on it.
About $1,200, yeah.
And if they just wanted, you know, then you'd be half the cost of the bench, plus the 200 for the plaque. If, you know, each bench could have up to two plaques.
I guess. Looks familiar.
Are you looking for a motion tonight for the initial purchase?
Yeah, the motion, I'm just looking to purchase the six benches and one memorial plaque, and I think we can figure out the program when we wanna buy five more plaques and kind of figure out how we wanna do that program. But for this bench, we wanted to do something for Eleanor, and I've just kind of taken this long to find the right bench to propose.
Where are you gonna put the bench for Eleanor?
Plan would be, so there's Bob's bench facing out, and then there's a tree, I think it'd be on the other side, into the grass a little bit, off the sidewalk, right off the sidewalk.
And where are the other four benches going?
That would be due to, to be determined, working, we'll be working with Sibego to find those locations.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something, like James said, it's something we've talked about for, you know, many years now, and, you know, I've talked to several people in town who are looking to buy benches, you know, through these programs, and so, I'll make a motion that we use $6,500 of the TIF funds for purchase of the six benches and the memorial plaque.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? I just wanna make sure that when we get these benches, they're not sitting at Public Works for six months while you figure out a place to put them.
Right, right.
If we're spending the money now, I just want them to be out as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And not waiting around for a year till we figure out exactly where to put them.
Hopefully, we can get them all in place for the bringing launches to Sullivan Square.
Certainly not have to wait until the edge is finished, you know? All right, next is a new business, community garden.
Here we go. So just to give you a little background, at the second sustainability meeting for Envision Berwick, which was in March, one of the first items that we talked about as a group was community garden, and it was pretty much the consensus of the group that it was time to have a bigger community garden in Berwick. There is a small community garden at the library, but that one is designated strictly for the food pantry. And they're very successful with it, in fact, I've been meeting with Sharon, and I'm also gonna help take over the administration of that this year because Sharon has just swamped. So that will continue to stay for food pantry only. So because that had such interest, I started right away looking at how we were gonna do this. I've done gardens from the East Coast to Hawaii to Alaska, but I've never done a community garden, and I've always been really interested in them. So I've been doing, since I'm retired, I have a lot of extra time, so I've been spending pretty much full-time for the last few months just working on this project. And so, let me just tell you where we're at with this. One of the first things I did was, I wanted to find out from the community what was important. So I created a survey, which I sent out through social media, and Marie was helpful in sending it out through Envision Berwick. We had 93 responses, which I thought was really good, I mean, that's about 1% or so, a little over 1%, and 96% of those people were Berwick residents. So just a little bit of demographics, the largest age group that responded was 31 to 45, and you can see how it goes down from there. I was disappointed that we didn't reach more younger people, or that younger people didn't respond, but some of that might be on me because I'm not really hip on Instagram and some of those other things, Marie and Elise did help me with that. Gender was almost, almost all female. And I wanted to find out if, who was, who were the people that were gonna answer these questions, were they homeowners, were they renters, did they share residence with someone? And we did get one person who was unhoused, who answered the survey. So I asked about what the feelings were about the community garden, and I apologize for typo in that second question. But most of the people, a good portion of the people said they liked it, it was a good idea, some people said, well, I have my own garden at home, but I think it's a good idea.
Curious about the 3% that said it's not a good idea.
I was just gonna say, I was curious about the other, I was like, what would be the other?
Just like, 3% say, no, this is not a good idea, I don't think there should be, you know, if you asked, you know, 100 people if they should put out a fire, there's gonna be two people, they're gonna be like, nah, let it burn, so...
Yeah, mostly the people, and I gave them a place to write what that other was, were people asking a question that was answered later in the survey.
Okay.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. I liked the fact that the number one answer was, why do you wanna be part of a, what interests you about a community garden? And that's community involvement. So that was, that was great to see that. And then you can see the answers there, next is access to fresh fruits and vegetables, socializing and recreation, interested in growing food to help others in need. Really great answers.
See, what I find amusing, not amusing, but interesting about that is the access to fresh food and vegetables as an issue, like, to me, it's not an issue, you can go to Hannaford, go to Walmart, and go to wherever, and you can get fresh food and vegetables, but, you know, other people who don't have cars, and, you know, they can't make the long trip to Walmart or Hannaford, and now we have Bad Wolf, you know, they have, they have vegetables there, and I was like, I don't know why you'd have vegetables, like, just in my mind, you can go anywhere and get vegetables, but they sell them out all the time, they just out, go, show up, and they're just like, we're out of vegetables today, because people just buy them up, because it's closer, it's right next to the town center, it makes a difference to have actual access.
Yes, and, and access to organic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's harder to find, we found when we moved here from the West Coast, we were so spoiled, that finding organic food is not as easy here. So being able to grow your own, know exactly what's going into the soil, is, I think, important to people. And they have a certain ownership, which is really good. So this was a question, I wanted to know the answer, and you can see, we definitely got our answer here. A lot of these kind of gardens are called allotment gardens, and they charge rent for a garden for a season. I've spent the last month or so traveling around to the various community gardens in the area, and interviewing them, and walking around the site, talking to the people who are running it, and a lot of them are the kind that charge rent. But like Sanford Garden, which is amazing, if you ever get a chance to go up and look at their garden, it's just fantastic. They do not charge rent for their lots, they are underwritten by grants, which is wonderful. So to see that money is an issue for people, I didn't say anything about what we would charge, because that hasn't been established yet, I just wanted to know, if we were to charge, would it be an issue? And clearly, it is.
What were other towns charging?
Oh, it ranges from like 25 up to like almost $50, which for some folks is substantial. And this one, I thought was, really says something about our community, that the number one answer here, above and beyond growing their own food, was that people wanted to grow food for the community, for the food pantry. So here's what we're looking at, we did a site search with some criteria, one of the places that we looked at was the Great Works Park area, but it's not the right, it's not the right area for it, it's not big enough, it doesn't get enough sun, did I say Great Works, or is it Great Falls? I always mess that up, Great Falls, right? Am I right? Sorry, yeah, Great Falls. It doesn't get enough sun, there were just a number of things that didn't quite line up, and we needed a bigger, much bigger space. So we looked around at what property there was that was owned by the town, and there was this space behind the police department, and several people that I talked to, when I was talking about the garden, they're like, where are you gonna put it? And I said, well, not sure, and people said, have you thought about the place behind the police department? And I said, yeah, we have. So that's what we're looking at. James, do you wanna give a little background on the legwork you did?
Sure, yeah, sure. Yeah, I reached out to both chiefs and just worked through some of the access concerns, and I think there'll still be some work to do, just to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page, and that's pretty much it that I have for an update on that specific part of it. I think you have a parking area off Logan Street, which I think will be great, so they can use either access off Logan, or coming in from public safety way, using the path between the two buildings.
Right. And then any overflow, like on workdays and things, which would probably be on weekends, could be at the parking lot at the corridor of Wilson and Sullivan, which is just a simple little walk over there.
A question, the area that you're talking about used to be the school.
It's a school, yes.
So when they cleaned that up, I mean, they took the foundation, everything out of it, because you're talking about a garden.
Yeah, it's all gone, yeah.
It's all gone.
All gone.
No, it is, when we were proposing to put the fire department over there and changing things around, there was a lot of discussion about what to do with that area back in there. At the time, I had suggested solar panels, but that didn't go too far.
I remember somebody suggested like a, like a public theater situation.
Right, a bandstand type thing and everything. And when I saw Amrita had the questionnaire, the survey up online, and I answered it, is I started thinking about it, and is, we got in touch with each other, and we took a walk out around there, and looked at it, all the construction debris was all taken out, everything was all hauled off, and the garden spaces themselves would be a raised bed garden, so it would be up above anyway.
I was gonna say, I think when this question is going, is how's the soil?
That's what I'm thinking is...
A lot of gravel and stuff underneath there, I'm sure. Is, when I was growing up, that was the first and second grade playground area for the Estebrook School, so there were probably a lot of pennies and marbles and things hidden in there also. But, but it gets a lot of sunlight all day long, it's central to the town, is...
There's water.
Yeah, we have water available, and so, as, when I talked to the fire chief there, he said, just make sure you get a deer fence, because the deer are out there every morning, so...
Well, you can see, I have a fence all around the perimeter there, so that's, that's just the first of the foundational work.
So it's gonna be raised up?
Yeah.
Yeah, barring any specific, you know, safety concerns from the, from the police chief or fire chief, I think it's a great place, specifically because, you know, there's always a risk that when you have a community garden, some narydewells will come by and ruin it when nobody's looking, but I don't think people are gonna travel to the police department to cause trouble.
Yeah, it's all be a little daring.
You'd have to have some, some pretty outrageous competence to do that, so...
Well, in my interviewing other people's gardens, there hasn't been any issue with vandalism, but there has been theft, which they've taken care of by calling the police, and I figure anybody who's stealing vegetables probably really needs them.
You would hope so.
You would hope, but we will have some gates and locks and things, so... So that's, that's it. So what I'm asking you is to help Berwick grow together, and act to approve this as our future community garden site.
Have you applied for any grants or anything? I mean, you talk about all this, we're looking for the funding.
Yeah, there's part of the Community Resilience Partnership, there's a $50,000 grant, and we'll probably either apply most, if not all of it, for that grant. And it's part of the partnership, and we have regional planning helping us apply, so it seems to me as big of a shoe-in as it gets for, as far as a grant goes, seems like a formality to apply and...
What's the timing of a grant like that? I mean, you apply for it now.
The window, the window for the grant opens up fairly soon, and I don't know when they award it.
Do we have to approve the site before you can apply?
I don't think so, but I, one of the reasons I wanted to bring it before you now is so that we don't have any things that get in our way. It wasn't specified that way from the meeting that we had, but I think if we go in and say, you know, we have, we have a site, and like I said, I've been doing, I have so much research done, and I've been doing a lot of writing, I wanna be ready, when they send out that request for proposal, I want us to be ready to get that right in.
My only concern is, you know, it's, it's public space, and I would like to hear possibly from the chiefs, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Also, give anybody who might have any objection or issue with it to come, be able to come forward.
Yeah.
So could we possibly set a public hearing for next meeting, and, you know, just say, if you have anything you wanna comment on about this, bring it here?
Or have any questions?
I agree, I think that that's a really good idea, and in the research that I've been doing, that is one of the things they say to do first, is talk to the community, talk to the neighbors, and get their buy-in.
Yeah, especially those on Logan Street.
And I have absolutely no problem with that, but I know that other people might, and I wanna make sure we give them a chance to speak up before we approve anything.
It might be like the first meeting in June, just by the topic and...
For the new ones, no.
That's fine, but, and if, I mean, if the chiefs wanna come and give us their two cents, whether they're for or against, that's fine, if they don't show up, we'll assume that they don't have any strong objections to it.
Just a quick email to the board.
Or they could just talk to James.
Like I said, I talked to the fire chief already, and he had no problem with it, just said, make sure you get a deer fence.
Yeah, and my husband was over there looking around one day, and the chief came out, they had a really nice discussion, so...
I just remember when we, when somebody had suggested the bandstand or whatever, the thing, then, there was some objections to something like that, you know, there were some, there were some safety concerns, just wanna make sure that everybody has the ability to come forward and talk about it if they do, so...
I think that's wise.
Okay, so we'll get that on the agenda. Is there anything else you wanna add?
Not at this moment.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for your presentation, we really appreciate it.
All right, we have no quitclaim deeds or installment contracts, abatements and supplements. Alex is here. First, we have a supplement for 420 Hanger LLC.
How you doing?
How are you, Alex?
Good. All right, so we have an abatement and a supplement on the same personal property account, so we can start with the supplement. It's for 420 Hanger LLC of 420 Portland Street. Um, it's for 420 Hanger LLC of 420 Portland Street in Berwick. The count, uh, let's see, 1040, um, and the total assessment was $22,753. Uh, the personal property equipment for the above referenced property was taxed to the unit owner in error. The above referenced business was the owner of the equipment as of April 1st, uh, 2022. Pursuant to Title 36, subsection 502, all real estate within the state and all personal property within the state is subject to taxation on the first day of April as provided, and the status of all taxpayers and of such taxable property must be fixed as of that date. Therefore, it is recommended that a supplemental tax bill be issued to 420 Hanger LLC in the amount of $414.56.
So just to be clear, we, we just taxed the wrong person, and now we're switching who we're taxing?
Yeah, so we taxed the personal property equipment to the, uh, unit owner instead of the company that leased them the equipment. So it's the same property, different account.
Do we need two different motions, or can we do it solo?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental tax to 420 Hanger LLC in the amount of $414.56 under account, uh, 1040.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, supplement.
Now we're going to abate the, uh, taxpayer who was taxed incorrectly. Uh, that's account number 881 for 420 Portland Street, um, for the assessment of $22,753. Um, the personal property account referenced above, uh, was taxed to Peter Geible in error. The equipment being taxed is, taxed, the individual unit owner was leased and not owned by the unit owner, um, pursuant to Title 36, subsection 502, all real estate and personal property within the state is subject to taxation on the first day of each April as provided, and the status of all taxpayers and such taxable property must be fixed as of that date. It is recommended that an abatement be granted in the amount of $414.56.
So then I will make a motion to approve the abatement of the amount of $414.56 to Peter Geible at 420 Portland Street, account 881.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. That is cleared up.
All right, so now we have a farmland penalty, um, being issued to Tax Map R40-4-2 to Wobestra Inc., location is Diamond Hill Road. Um, the taxable assessment was $9,400. Um, the property owner, owner, Wobestra Inc. has requested the entirety of the above noted parcel be removed from the farmland current use program. Since the property will no longer be in the farmland program, a penalty must be issued. Um, please see the attached farmland penalty calculation sheet calculated pursuant to Title 36, subsection 1112C3. Therefore, it is recommended that you approve the farmland penalty in the amount of $15,986.60 to the property owners for the removal of 26.8 acres from the farmland classification.
Do they know this penalty's coming?
They do, they requested it, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the farmland penalty in the amount of $15,986.60 to Tax Map R040-4-2.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. That, it should be that. Thank you, Alex.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, second public comment. Does any member of the public want to make a comment?
Good night.
Thank you very much. All right. Uh, we are going to be going into executive session for a discussion of personnel. Uh, we will not be coming back out of this, we will not be making any votes. Um, so are there any other business non agenda items that people wish to bring up?
I think we want to discuss the invite to the MSAD 60 school.
Yes.
Process.
What about?
Are we, are we going?
Are we going? Um, I had not decided and figured out if I could fit it in my schedule.
I know, I know, well, that's...
That's what I was working on, too. I don't know.
And, and that's, and that is my, that was my concern with the short notice.
Yeah, and so, I, I don't know if I will be there. I have, I have, I had the invite, I would like to try, but I haven't figured out if I can squeeze it in yet, you know?
No, and, and I agree, and, and again, that was, you know, and I guess for the public, you know, it was last that we attended, or at least at the school we wanted to put it up, with a very short turnaround, and I, and I, I do feel it's important that all three towns, select boards are involved.
But also, I'm not sure what we're gonna accomplish by going to the...
Correct, exactly.
I mean, are we gonna change the budget by showing up? It's, you know?
I think it's important that we...
Yeah, definitely.
...hear from them. It, it's just a matter of timing.
Yeah.
I, I'm planning on going if I can make it, you know, right now it looks like I am.
And me as well.
Is, um, and I, you know, is short notice, and they only want a half hour of time to do the presentation, you know?
Over a, a budget of like, what, $16 million?
Yeah, and so, and I don't know how much time is gonna be to, you know, questions and answers, you know? But, um, I plan on being there.
What is the date?
Uh, next Wednesday, week of...
Next Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday, that's right, yeah.
I mean, I guess the other follow-up too is...
Next Tuesday at 5:00 PM, I think it was.
If, if any residents have any questions that they want us to ask, if we have the time, please let us know, you know, so we can bring up those concerns.
All right, the, um, all right, so it's May 9th. Next meeting, we have the public hearing about the vote, is that what it is? Yep, so we have a public hearing about the election that's happening in the second, yeah, second Tuesday of June, starting in June. The first Tuesday is gonna be select board meetings, so there'll be no more conflict with that going forward. Um, and although I just said it, there is an election in June. Please mark your calendars, make sure you go. If you're, if you're concerned about such things, you gotta approve the town budgets, so please come and vote, and make sure your voice is heard. Don't complain about it after that you didn't know, because we're telling you. Come to vote. Um, all right, I'll make the motion that we enter executive session under Title 1, 4056A for discussion of personnel.
Second.
All those in favor? Good night.